I'm ready, let's get this bad boy on the road.
It's still in the sixes. Is it frozen? Seriously?
It's been seven for almost thirty seconds.
I know, hers has too.
Okay.
Seven.
Okay, mine's at seven.
Okay, Mike's at seven.
Okay, so now we can start.
Yeah.
Call to the Carney School District Board of Education meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, number two in the public for which it stands. Under oath, in the name of the
Here.
Yeah.
Dan Holliday.
Yeah.
John Kern.
Yeah.
Reese Whitezer.
Here.
Susan Mormon.
Yeah.
Arlene Bailey.
Yes, we have a quorum present. Got the agenda.
May the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? You? We do not have any public comment this evening, so we'll move on to recognitions.
And would Coach Nick Ward please come to the podium and speak to us about girls wrestling?
Alright, so just kind of guess a little recap on the season. We had really great numbers this year, the biggest numbers I think we've had in the program since we started five years ago. Started around twenty-five, ended around twenty, which is really great. We had a full lineup, which makes us super competitive right off the start. We went nine and oh in duels, we won the conference, took second at districts, which was kind of not what we had, I guess, set our sights on, but that was a good lesson for us in kind of adversity, we took some hits there. It was hard to leave some of our, you know, our beloved teammates behind, but we went on with only four girls to the state tournament. We knew that was an uphill task to try to compete as a team with four qualifiers. Got down there, first few rounds went pretty well. I guess back up, we get our draws kind of a few days before the state tournament and our, it's kind of a random deal, there's no seeding, and so you kind of, it's kind of like bracket night, you stay up the night before and you pray to the wrestling gods that you're gonna get a good draw, and we woke up and we were like, these are the worst draws I've ever seen. It just was like, it was like someone literally handpicked them for us, and so we were like, well, I guess we've got to go wrestle. So, we went down and the girls really, you know, showed up and competed, and the first few rounds, we came back to the hotel that first night and we said, hey, guys, I'm not real good at math, but I'm looking at things here and I think we should go try to win this tomorrow, and they're like, okay, we can win it? Like, yeah, I think we can. And so, we went in in the morning, we had great rounds in the morning, the semifinal rounds and the consolation semifinal rounds are big points for us, and we bonus through all of those, which means we, we won by, bonus points meaning we get pins, tech falls, major decisions, instead of just winning by points. And so domination really is what was happening, and so, we came back after those rounds and we were in it, and we needed a couple breaks to go, needed a couple teams to take some hits, and they did, and it worked out in our favor, and so, four girls, a state championship, year five in the program, all four of them medaled, all four of them scored team points for the team. It was pretty magical, I mean honestly, it's like, and I've been a part of a 2018 state championship team, we took nine kids on that, all nine medaled, all nine contributed, and it took every single point, and we literally won by half a point, the smallest point margin you can win by. And being an old Marceline boy, we beat Brookfield, so like, that's pretty, pretty awesome, so. And I told some of the guys I'm friends with down there from there, I say, you know, I would have been okay with tenth place as long as you guys got eleventh, so. So anyways, that's, that's kind of a nutshell, I guess, how the season played out. We've got some, Savannah McDowell was academic all-state, we had thirteen all-conference girls, that's our whole lineup, we had one spot that we didn't fill, so we would have probably taken fourteen, I think, so. Thirteen all-conference, second place in the district, you know, class one state champs, so, I'm super excited for them, I'm super proud of them, like, they, they overperformed, they set a tangible example, I think, for the girls in our program, the little girls in our school district. Hey, if you work hard, here's what you can do, right? And so, that's, I think that's the big message, message from what these girls did, is it's a, they were a lesson in growth mindset, all of them had, you know, took losses throughout the year, I think everybody but Haley had double-digit losses, so our schedule's tremendously tough, it prepares them for that tournament, and they performed, so, I think that's about it. I do, I do have to say, I gotta give props to both of my assistants, Coach Loughlet and Coach Williams, they're above and beyond culture builders, they're, they're at other things outside of wrestling, Coach Williams isn't an employee of the district, he's a non-faculty staff coach member, he's at plays, he's at football games, he's involved in these kids' lives, and I'm grateful for both of them, and they're a big part of the success we had, so I gotta, I gotta make sure I give them a shout out, so, that's that. Other than that, state champ girls over there.
Bring them up, please.
Yeah, come on. Real quick, yeah, so I would just say, this is Haley Romero, Haley is third-place state medalist, she won the Wonder Woman tournament last year as a junior, which is a kind of a prestigious national regional tournament, eighty-some teams from the Midwest, she won that, she took third this year, last year at state, kind of faltered a little bit, right, and then came back this year motivated, hungry. She's been a backbone of the building process of this program, where in year five, she's a four-year letterman, a state medalist now, placed in big prestigious events, wrestles year-round, and sets a great, great example for the kids, so Haley Romero, senior. Riley's a freshman, Riley came in this year, she's, came out right out of the gate, winning big matches, she was ranked number one at one point in the season as a freshman, took a couple tough losses to the eventual state champion, we closed the gap on her every time we wrestled, and I think next time she's gonna probably find a new weight class to get away from us. McDowell here, Savannah, just, she's our X-factor really at the state tournament, I think going in, these three other girls kind of had established themselves in their bracket as a threat, Savannah was on the, on this, this trajectory coming, coming out of the Christmas break, and wrestled her best tournament at the district state tournament, she's totally dedicated, she's our academic weapon, she goes from our wrestling practices to softball, club practices year-round, she's got a full plate, she manages it well, she's a good leader. Bailey Martin, our little pistol here, she's a, she's a firecracker, she pins everybody, she wrestles, she's high-energy, she's fun to watch, people like, in the gym kind of take notice when she, she goes out on the mat to wrestle, she beats people that she's not supposed to, and she does it in dramatic fashion, and it's fun to watch, so, yeah, third place, fourth place, fourth place, second place, every one of them wrestled back to at least the third place round, which is huge, at the state tournament after taking a loss, they always say in the bracket, the champion is the, the best wrestler, the third-place kid is the toughest, right? So these three that got into that third-place match are darn tough, so, there you go.
Do the K. Will they do the K? I think they're gonna.
Yeah, do they want?
I don't think they want.
Are we still giving them a friend?
Thank you for allowing that frame, that was amazing.
Didn't Nick get Coach of the Year?
I need to go watch that.
And with our next recognition.
Coach, Nick, get Coach of the Year or something too.
Nick, did you get Coach of the Year?
Yeah.
Coach Nick Ward was the class one girls' Coach of the Year.
That's what I was gonna say!
Well, he would never, he would never tell you that. Now, first off, congrats to the girls, amazing historic season, something, you know, that was an idea thrown out there years ago, and Coach Ward and I had a lot of conversations together, at the time, he was one of my head assistant coaches, and was like, hey, I think this would be a really good fit for you, and he's taken it and done fantastic things with them, so first off, congratulations to you guys and girls. I get to talk about two, two of our boys, state medalists tonight, we, as a season, we were able to also finish as conference champs, but as far as our year, it was, what we would say was a down year overall, had a lot of injuries that plagued the, the varsity lineup, and was constantly looking to who's the next guy up and, you know, ready to go, and I think overall, you know, by winning, winning conference with five injuries at one point, to our starters, was, was a big deal, and it just showed, you know, from top to bottom, that really the toughness that we had, because we had two seniors and a lot of inexperience, Coach Minnick and Coach Danneman did a fantastic job of sending big boys to us this year, we had twelve, one ninety and up, and that was a good problem to have, you can only fit three of them in the lineup, but, you know, them, them coming out and participating and brought a lot of good energy to the, to the team and the program, and it was just, you know, teaching them how to wrestle, and when you have athletes, that's, that's a good thing, but we get to talk about two of the best tonight, first off, we had a sophomore Ryder Shelton, his season record was forty-two and three, he was the Misha Class Three District Four Champion, Misha Class Three State Champion, he was named first-team all-conference, the Missouri Wrestling Association named him the Class Three District Four Wrestler of the Year, which means in our class and our district, all coaches recognized he was the best kid out there. He was dominant this season, is the, the best way to describe him. The state tournament, we again look at Coach Ward, same thing the night before, and saw his semifinals match, like dang, that's the one kid we didn't want to draw in the semis that we had last year, his freshman year, he beat him with a last-second takedown, this year, he was like, Coach, I'm gonna, I'm gonna whip him. I was like, alright, man, let's do it, and first two, first two matches weren't even on his radar, which is a rare thing at the state tournament, went out, quick pin, quick pin, semifinals, he wasn't lying, he went out and beat the kid thirteen to nothing. So again, another major bonus point that he's, he's earning for the team, and then last match in the, the state finals goes out against a Smithville kid we hadn't seen all year, and anytime you see green, you, you want to beat him, and put a, a simple eight to nothing with what seemed like very little effort, at one point, I looked at him and I said, what are you doing? Because he was looking at his buddy on the mat next to him to see if he won, because it was like, hey, he knew he had the match wrapped up, and again, the talent and the skill that he has just is remarkable to see out there on the mat, and I think what we were most impressed, I got to talk to the, when the city of Carney got to recognize him last week, say, I didn't, I didn't see this happen, this was after the fact, how he grew as a leader this year, and it really showed in the Carney Courier end-of-the-season interview, where what he immediately started talking about was, he couldn't wait till we had our full team back together next year, like, he was excited what he did at the state tournament, winning back-to-back state titles is a pretty big deal, but he missed his buddies coming with him, that, you know, a couple of them injuries, a couple of them here and there, and he's excited to take that leadership role into his junior season next year, so. Two-time state champion Ryder Shelton. Next we have junior Jacque Gist, Jacque did one of the hardest things you could do this season, he spent over a month on the injured reserve, he was one of the five that was out, and that went up to the district tournament, we got him back for four practices, to the point where we are having conversations like, hey, I don't, I don't know if this is what's best, you know, for, for everyone involved, obviously him as an individual, but he had, it wasn't just the season that started, we knew he was somebody who trains all year-round, powerlifting is huge for him, if you hadn't noticed, he's a rather good physical specimen, and that's something to where he is always making sure he's in shape and ready to go, and that was the only thing I think I saw for the first time, a little bit of not-so-sure, because he had a month where we, he literally couldn't practice, and it's like, alright, well, let's see how this week goes, and had a great week, and districts had one tough semifinals match where he honestly just ran out a little bit of gas, and I didn't blame him, because he had a month, month on the bench, and the next week, that nervousness was still there for him, the very first match of the state tournament, he dropped it, you know, he was tied at, got down five to nothing, tied it up seven to seven, and lost, you know, with about thirty seconds left, and ended up giving up a fall, and it was like, he came off that match and then goes, Coach, I got this, I'm good, like, it immediately switched to not feeling sorry for yourself, but like, he realized he was good and he was prepared and he was ready to go, and one of the toughest things you can do in wrestling is take that first-round loss, as Coach Ward said, the toughest people are the ones who come back on the backside, and he did that with some domination himself, finished in the, the fourth-place match, so took fourth place at state, really in his fourth full year ever wrestling, and, you know, also is one of those guys that does everything right on and off the mat, is, was a big team leader this year, and was MWA academic all-state, so he carries that academics to go along with that state medal and his success in powerlifting, so he's the, a well-rounded fella, so, very proud of both these guys, great season.
I was gonna ask you on Twitter, you know, he's your ripped guy, right? So is he still gonna be the guy next year?
Okay, so wrestling folks, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay, if you would like to leave, we're gonna show you our store, we're bringing the little guys in, but you're welcome to stay for more exciting more.
I don't understand why they all leave.
Thank you all very much for coming, thanks. Coaches, thanks.
Congrats, you guys.
I gotta say.
I feel like I want to tell the parents they can come around this way.
And with us in the spotlight tonight, Ms. Gonzalez is going to present the Dogwood Ukulele Group.
Good evening, I have Dogwood's second and third grade ukulele club, led by Mrs. Obiko, and we have Adrian and Carson.
Hi, I'm Carson Freeman.
I'm Adrian Porter, we are Dogwood's Ukulele Club.
Carney Education Foundation granted Dogwood thirty ukuleles.
We started the club this year for second and third grade, we have forty-two students in our club.
Many of us have loved learning that we have purchased our own ukuleles.
Tonight we will be playing a song called Ready For Tomorrow, we hope you enjoy.
Thank you all so much. Yes, Ray, do we want to get a picture?
I've got a picture, so.
You've got a picture, okay, parents, did you all, any of you want to get pictures? You can come around here, please. How often do you guys practice? How often do you guys practice? Second grade on Tuesday mornings, third grade on Thursday. Great, if you need to come back here too, you can. Keep up the good work, keep practicing. Parents, thank you for making sure they got here, that's awesome. Michelle, last year for her birthday, wanted to use the last. I can remember, I think it was my first year on the board, when we got the presentation for wrestling, to start the girls' wrestling program. Oh, I remember that. Gonna work together to get it going, and.
Jake Hill took some, you know, sacrificed some time to help get going.
Absolutely, so that's very cool. And now we are at the consent agenda?
May the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Any questions about any piece of the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question, I have a question on the approval for the Qualtrics. Obviously, I mean, we've been updated a little bit about what Qualtrics is, and I just wanted a little more understanding of what we need an online survey platform for, obviously, you know, what's the competition for Qualtrics, why, you know, why do we feel like this, this is the one that we should be spending, you know, forty thousand dollars on?
Mr. Weichl, do you want to come to the podium?
Good evening, school board. So, just like when a scientist is developing a new chemical, or when an engineer is designing a building, they need to measure, they need to quantify, they need to take a, a very data-driven, quantifiable approach to making sure that the work they're doing is structured correctly, that it's going to, that they're forecasting things correctly, well, this is a similar set of tools for engagement, for making sure that we are serving our families, we're, we're serving our staff in the best way possible, and that we're being very responsive, so, Qualtrics is a company that has been doing this for a long time, they are the, the best at what they do, they serve, and have served for many, many years, a sizable percentage of the top companies in the world, when it comes to customer service platforms, when it comes to survey tools, when it comes to analytics tools, they have developed simply the best industry-standard tools in the world, and we, in the process of talking about how we wanted to continue to improve, one of the things that Dr. Miller brought to the table was, we want to make sure that we are, we are, have, we have that feedback loop, right? That, that we're not just making good plans and enacting them the way we said we would, but we also want to be measuring success, and then figuring out how we can do better based on that feedback, right? Well, that all requires tools to measure those things, you know, and so, we, our strategic plan has a number of really important objectives that these tools are going to help us address, tools around making sure that we are measuring what do our staff want and need, and how do they feel about how we are addressing that, right? And not just doing that annually, but actually having a process where we're regularly pulse-checking with our staff to make sure that we're addressing what they want, and, and again, they have tools in their, in this tool chest that we're going to be getting from them, that will help us address that, that's one side of it, same with our parents and our families, and the reality is that regardless of what happens at a state level, we live in a society, we live in a, in a community where people do have choice, they have school choice already, you know, it's, you don't have to move that far to pick, to move to a different school district, right? And so, you know, we want to make sure that we are serving our families, and we're providing the best possible service, well, you gotta measure that, right? You have to reach out to them and figure out, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? And again, that can't just be on an annual basis, that has to be something that we're doing regularly, one of the things that I'm very excited about with this platform is that it's going to give us the capacity to build a tool into our websites that. to build a tool into our websites that every page you're on, you'll be able to click on a button and give us some, some kind of feedback, or ask a question, or make a complaint, or ask for help. And then we'll have systems where that can be directed to the right person, and we can track to see how that is being addressed. So that's some of what we're going to be doing. I don't necessarily have a deep or comprehensive response for you, but I certainly can provide more information if you need it.
No, I think that you answered my question beautifully, which is, this is all about how we are engaging the community, and it's something that you feel very strongly about. So I appreciate that.
So we've done surveys already in the past. Will this take play, like, is this taking place of other survey platforms that we're using?
We will use these tools as part of our surveying process. We will begin to integrate them. There is a whole wide set of tools that may take us some time to integrate fully. So we're going to really identify what are those immediate priorities for us, integrate those tools, and to begin to, as we move forward. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to structure this as a three-year process with them, with, with the option of moving beyond that, because the set of tools they bring to the table are very impressive. But also, there's a time and task involved in integrating that into what we do, right? So we want to make sure we give ourselves time to be able to do that work. But what's certainly one of the early things will be making sure that we're, when it comes to like our surveys that we do, that we're using those tools. One of the things I'm very excited about that they bring to the table is, we can start asking qualifiable questions, how-do-you-feel questions, that are, that are not necessarily on a Likert scale, you know? And then they have a tool that actually then analyzes, analyzes that and provides us with data that we can then use and actually be actionable.
The analytic. Yeah, the analytic piece behind it will be extremely helpful.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I appreciate, I just, it's just one of those things that, you know, obviously, it's, you know, $40,000, it's not a small, it's underneath our threshold, obviously, with policy, and I appreciate that. But I wanted to hear a little more of why. Sure. And that was. And I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Kern, I do. It's, listen, you know, I want to make sure that we are using, you know, our residents' resources effectively and efficiently. And so, I think, you know, we took a long time. This was a team effort. I want to shout out to certainly Mr. Blankenship, Dr. McMaines, Dr. Miller. You know, there was, it was a real team effort in terms of looking at what the options were that were out there, having conversations with Qualtrics, thinking deeply about whether this was the right option. And ultimately, we do, we are very confident that these are tools that will help us achieve action steps that are laid out in the strategic plan, and then ultimately achieve those objectives. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on any other items in the consent agenda? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Information items. Ginger, you're up.
As you refer to the fund balance report, you'll notice that we've increased our operating fund balance projection from 20.45% last month to 22.38%. That's primarily due to a reduction in anticipated purchase services for the district. At the end of February, the district has received 79% of our anticipated operating revenues, and we have incurred 55% of our expenses. Budget administrators are currently diligently working to solidify the fiscal '23 budget. Final purchase orders will be completed by the end of this month. Does anyone have any questions?
So we're still using the same format with the spreadsheet, and I know that in the past, we had approved a different software to work through.
Forecast Five.
Forecast Five. And are we implementing that?
So we are currently, Ginger has provided the data to Forecast Five. We're, we're making sure that the data is accurate. That's where we are right now. We found some holes in what the, what we've submitted versus what's being reported. So we're trying to clean up before we start to use that as a basis for decisions.
Okay. Because this, I mean, Ginger's great about keeping the details, but I just know that that was something that obviously we.
It was an investment.
It was an investment, and I like returns.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you, Ginger.
We have a written program evaluation of special education. Any questions? Comments on that? Thank you for putting that together. Skoki. Next, we have construction update.
The construction update is that there really is no change from last month. You have me here instead of Newkirk or DLR. But the EEC expansion, the high school theater, and the middle school restroom projects, where I'll start to kick off a soonest school that's out in the summer. The junior high wall project is actually, if rain cooperates next week, the exterior part of that is going to take place next week. If, if rain is in, if it actually rains next week, multiple days, and that, that project will, the exterior will probably go to the first days of summer. The junior high roof project, we'll start to see some semis show up over spring break and drop off materials, and that's going to be housed in the south parking lot along the outer edge. And then in April, they'll start to have some people prepping areas for removal of materials. And, and then in May, over the non-classroom areas of the junior high, that work will start in, in May.
So, the materials are coming in early. Are we securing them some way, or providing, you know?
Fencing around.
Fencing around, okay. And then, we talked last time about the bid packages. I mean, like, we were all talking like they were going to come in underneath. Obviously, those happen after the board meeting. I mean, we've, we like where the bids are coming in. We're staying on, on budget with all of the projects, to your recollection.
They are, they are. When they were bid together, as a, as a package, they are under, they are under budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What's the, sorry, with the theater, are we having any more issues getting items and products? I know that for a while, we had some, the leadway of those were long. Are those coming in?
They are. They are.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Please tell Ben we missed him. He probably didn't know what to do tonight.
We'll do.
During the school board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have return to school plan update.
Good evening again, board. So, in compliance with ESAR guidelines, we are tasked with making sure that we review our return to school plan every six months. And so, we're at that time. This has been called through by our district nurse, Karen Hughes, and myself, and the school leadership. We've simplified it. We've, we've cut out some things that, in Nurse Hughes's opinion, were no longer needed. And so, you know, I would say that will be an ongoing process as we do this again in another six months. A lot of districts at this point have even smaller plans than we do. So, the good news is that, that the story is that we're continuing to return to normal, right? And so, so I think that's a positive thing we can take away from that. Are there any questions?
We will minimally have to review this at least one more time, probably before the end of September. And again, as Ray said, we're, you know, we've shifted out of pandemic or in endemic approach. Hand washing, good, just basic hygiene is what we're trying to reinforce. You know, if kids are sick, stay home, going back to policy, so.
Might not be a plan anymore.
It might be a program now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the DESI annual report. Ms. Cott?
So, the entire annual performance report is pages and pages of detailed information. So I'm giving you guys an overview. So the APR report, this is the rubric that DESI uses to, to grade the school. And it's truly the only matrix that they use to, to grade us. Everything they do, it's based off of the MSEP, which is the Missouri School Improvement Plan. This is the first year we are graded off of the new MSEP-6. So, MSEP-6 is our Missouri School Improvement Plan. You all know, some of you guys were a part of the new strategic plan that we have. And that is, our strategic plan is built off of MSEP-6. So, the biggies are continuous improvement for all of the schools, prepping all kids for life beyond high school, and promoting practices that lead to healthy school systems. You do have to remember that this is a completely different gauge than what we have been scored against in the past. Tammy Thomas, as you all know, our, our data coordinator, she said, this is not an apples-to-oranges comparison. It's an apples-to-broccoli. So, totally different. The ways we are scored, the two big areas, it's performance, and that's 70% of our score. And then the other 30% comes from continuous improvement. Under performance, under academic achievement status, that is truly, that proficient and advanced on our MAP test and our EOCs. For district-wide, we scored, we got 100% of our points in academic achievement status for, for all kids combined. We did lose points on our student groups. So that's one area that we need to focus in on. If you guys have any questions, but anything I say.
Explain that a little bit further for me, what you just said.
Our student groups that they look at, you have to have at least 30 kids to be counted in a student group. As far as race goes, they look at black and Hispanic. They also look at students who are on an IEP. And they look at students who are free and reduced through direct certification. So those are the student groups that they look at. And it can be 30 kids district-wide, when they're looking at our district score, or within a building. The, then we have success ready, our career and credit, career and college readiness assessments. We did lose some points on that as well. And they look at graduation rate and our graduation follow-up. So that's the big part of our score. The other 30% is over here. A lot of it, honestly, it's, it's, it's paperwork. The, the required documentation down there at the bottom, the, the audit, the school board report, the getting all of our Moses Core Data information in on time. This year, we did get 30 points. Everybody actually got the 30 points because they haven't looked deeply at our response to standards. But next year, that will be scored individually. They, you know, they're looking at our climate and culture survey, things that they haven't really looked at in the past. They are looking at now. So, these are our strategic goals. Again, you guys have seen this, but this is all built based on the new MSEP-6. So our score, and you guys are used to seeing us at like 98, 99%, so you have to remember, this is totally different. It is accredited. You know, and, and this is, this is a really good score. So, out of the 553 Missouri districts, we are in the top 8% in the state. And this is where we fall in our peer group. And just to give you guys a little bit of a comparison. So, this is how many, if you look at 2018, this many schools, 320 schools, which is why they've really changed the bar. And they're making it tougher. We had 320. In 2018, we had 435 schools that scored in this range. We have only, this year, only four schools scored in the 95% or better. Of those four schools, three of them were K8 districts. And the other one had a population of 600 students in the school. It's, it's not the same for them. They don't have the student groups that we would have that, I mean, some of those student groups really do hurt your scores. So it's, I mean, they're, it's not a, it's not a fair comparison. It really isn't. So where do we go from here? We have poured into the data. We know exactly where we have missed points, where we can gain points back, where we need to gain points back. All of the principals were given a template to pour through their building data to decide where they can focus their attention to improve their scores. We're going to focus on those student groups, make sure we're giving the adequate support to all the kids that they need. We got to look at things. Are we developing a culture and climate of inclusivity? Our curriculum, we're digging into that. We're looking at our strengths. We're looking at our weaknesses, and we want to know how we get better. And then, after everybody has completed the first two rounds of their, going through their individual CSEP's, then we can apply for exemplary status in our regional supervisor. He felt like Carney was in a good place to apply for exemplary status in some of those key areas from the MSEP. And that is it.
So again, I just want to reiterate, Mrs. Cott shared some fantastic map data at our last, last board meeting. And that's reflected in that status score. So we know that there's pockets of growth for us, and as she indicated, student growth measures, they're calculating that in a very different way. And so we're working with DESI to fully understand what that student growth measure looks like, how they're calculating it, so we can best move the target for, for our students. And, and I think there's some easy, low-hanging fruit. The CCR assessments, the career colleges readiness assessments, that's an area where we can probably recoup some easy points to, again, move us over that 90% threshold. Again, districts that are accustomed to being well over that 95%, we're well below. So this, this has been a recalibration for several districts. And the 89.5%, while we're not comfortable with that, we will be pursuing a greater percentage. Bigger districts, this has been a paradigm shift for, for many, many school districts.
And we did lose points on that academic achievement growth. But it's worth noting that the higher you score on your MAP and EOCs, the harder it is to make growth. I mean, yes, we, we have room to improve, and we plan on improving. But the, the higher you are, the harder it is to achieve the growth. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have the bond update.
Thank you. I, I thought I would just, again, each month, just give you an update, again, regarding the decision to pause elementary number five. So Excellence K-12 is, has concluded their first of two weeks doing survey data of the 300 surveys that they plan to receive. I think they're said, they've acquired 147 surveys. So they're about at that halfway mark. So again, we feel like we'll be able to meet that target, conclude those 300 surveys by next week, and hopefully have some good data by the beginning of April. We've also had Rick Braemer from Applied Economics, he's already been out to the city and to the school district, gathered lots of good preliminary information. He's going through and going to run it through his, his system to provide a real detailed report to us again. So hope to have that information to us at the April work session. So again, we should have information coming from the Excellence K-12, probably by the April board meeting, demographic enrollment information by the April work session. So again, pulling this information together, so hopefully we can make a well-informed decision.
For the 147 that they've got, have they had to work really hard to get 147? Are we getting a good response whenever we call?
Ray, can you speak to that? Do you know?
I can follow up, I don't have any.
I just wondered. Okay.
Okay, we'll move to action items. Approval of the discipline guide?
Move to approve the 2023-2024 Discipline Guide as presented.
Second.
I appreciate you all going through the discipline guide and the changes. There looks like there are several, but I will talk to you about, give you a summary of what those look like. Three goals that the team that went through the discipline guide really had in mind this year was to improve consistency, improve flexibility for our administrators, and then develop a better overall knowledge base of our discipline policies as well. That's why we want to go through these and look at these and vet these every single year. As far as consistency goes, we had to update our board policies because we went to EGS. There were still some of the old MSBA policies located in our discipline guide, so we made sure we updated our discipline guide to reflect those EGS policies. And also, a lot of our consequences, if you look from grade six through 12, they had actually had different consequences. And some of them, you know, when you look at items like harassment, violence, fighting, some of the big ones, the safe school violations, we really wanted to offer our administrators flexibility to, if they needed to, enforce some pretty serious consequences, if it was needed. Flexibility, as far as superintendent referrals, a lot of the consequences also automatically refer students to me, and it's not that I don't want to see those students, but one of those examples would be, we might have a couple third or fourth graders rolling around the floor, and we call it a fight. That would automatically be referred to me as a superintendent. Now, we've changed that language, instead of an automatic referral, to be review. And the review, I think, is powerful, is that I'm always in contact with those building administrators, and when those things come up, we can discuss those discipline issues, and also, that helps that consistency. So, the documentation, parent communication, the way we initiate consequences, we can track, and I would be the one that will track that, and that way, we can make sure that we're consistent with the implementation of those discipline consequences if that's needed. We looked really specifically at harassment, physical and non-physical, with incidents of violence as well. You know, things have changed in our society. There are a lot of things that kids get into, or kids do, or have access to, that I didn't when I was, you know, at high school, middle school, junior high age. Some of these things create unsafe environments, or could create unsafe environments. Most of them will disrupt the learning environment. And one message that I know our assistant principal group, and I'll talk about them here in a second, they really wanted to have the flexibility to keep their school safe. We want all kids to have a safe learning environment. We want all kids to adhere to our policies and our structure. And a lot of times when they don't, it's just a simple conversation, there's a learning opportunity, but there are incidents when kids make mistakes or do things that cause the environment to be unsafe, and we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to make sure that the kids who are there, doing what they are supposed to do, are able to learn and enjoy school without threat or without worrying about what the next day's going to bring. Now, was our discipline policy that out of whack? Absolutely not. There were just a few tweaks. A lot of these things are just, we're going to have the same consequences six through 12, and set up different ones for six, seven, different ones for eight, nine, different ones for 10, 12. That's the way it looked a lot. And so, we shored up a lot of those things. I will talk about the assistant principal group. As you know, from some of my board updates, I've been meeting consistently with them, just to, you know, we have a lot of conversations with a lot of professional development, that's something that's been new for them this year. They were instrumental in this process. They did a lot of the legwork, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Dan Miller shouldered a lot of this work. He's an excellent assistant principal and has a very, very high ceiling for leadership in this district, but he was instrumental in putting this together. We worked together, but he did a lot of the heavy lifting. The other assistant principals offered suggestions, he put all together in a comprehensive document. We met a couple times. We made our final changes, sent it to the building principals, got approval. We've also sent this to legal, so Ed Council has vetted this. They found literally no issues with the changes that we made, so you can know that, that that's been vetted by our legal counsel. And really, I think this is going to make us a much more effective administrative team by the flexibility, by the consistency. That way, we can all talk and work together when these things arise. And again, we're not seeing a lot of these things, but when things that are of serious nature arise, we want to make sure that we're able to handle them appropriately. You guys have any questions for me about the proposed changes?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the discipline policy? opposed? Thank you. Approval of auditing services?
Ms. Elsie, do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Move to approve, sorry, move to approve the proposal and understanding of services agreement for the professional auditing services from Westbrook &amp; Co., PC as presented.
Second.
Sorry. My computer.
In February, we sent out a request for proposal for auditing services. In March, we received three proposals that have been entered in your board packet. We had a team comprised of our finance group, Sal Morris, Marcia Bartow, and LeAnn Bradbury, as well as Becky Burkemper and myself. We reviewed all three proposals and felt that Westbrook definitely met all of our requirements. We've used them for years now, plus they were our low bid. Does anyone have any questions about the others?
Okay. All in favor? opposed? Thank you. Approval of insurance consultant?
Move to approve agreement with USI for insurance consultant services as presented.
Second.
Dr. McMainz?
Up again. All right. As you all know, we sent out an RFP on January 20th for insurance consultant services. It's been over 10 years since we've done that. We've kind of maintained the status quo with our insurance consultant and also our insurance plan that we've offered to our staff. Me being new, wanted to understand that process. Dr. Miller was super supportive in that, she pushed me a little bit to get that RFP out because she knew the importance of it, and I appreciate that. But we sent the RFP out, we had four firms, Respond, Lockton, who is our current broker, or was our current broker, Holmes Murphy, USI, and Cottingham and Butler were the four that we received RFPs for. The committee, Salary Benefits Committee, and I'll speak about that a little bit, too. We've typically had a very small salary and benefits committee in this district, or insurance committee. I wanted to get a more comprehensive level of input from our staff. I do think, we had 14 members, they were all certified teachers representing all the buildings. I do think I want to increase that committee even more, to have representatives of administrative and support staff as well, even for this process, but even for the rest of the talks we have from this point on. But I will say that I was super impressed with the engagement level of that committee. My worst fear going into this process, when we brought the three firms in to present to us, was that the teachers would not engage with the firms. That was, that fear was quickly dashed because the teachers jumped right in. In fact, they might have been a little hard on some of the firms, which, you know, maybe deservedly so. But the Salary and Benefits Committee, again, I can't stress how great they were to work with, super positive. It was late nights, a lot of talking, it's hard to sit and listen. As exciting as insurance consultants are, you know, it's dry material. Although, the firm I'm going to hopefully, or recommend to you tonight, that you'll hopefully approve, is anything but run-of-the-mill. And so, we interviewed those three, and we scored them on customer service, on transparency of their fee structure, staff engagement, their strategies to help us provide a great product and service for our staff, and then the overall feel of the presentation. Through that vetting process, we had one unanimous winner, and that was USI, which stands for Understand Service and Innovate. I don't know how they came up with that, but that's what it is, just USI is what they go by. Unanimously, the committee selected these guys. I checked references with other school districts that are currently using USI, and the referrals came back, I mean, spotless, just overwhelming support for this firm and how they have helped their school districts make really good choices when it comes to supporting their staff with medical benefits. And so, the gentlemen behind me, Brad Vanegriff and Reese West, are going to talk to you briefly about why we are making a good decision by recommending USI to provide the insurance consulting services for us, and I'll turn it over to them.
Just a quick question for you, Dr. McMainz.
Yes.
If you could state anything that anybody on the committee, any concerns they had with going to USI, and I ask this in front of them on purpose so that they will hear if there are any concerns? Did anybody have any concerns, like they thought, oh, we kind of, I wish this was a little different, or anything?
You know, and you might help me with this, Ms. Switzer, is I don't remember hearing anything, any negative comments. I mean, they knocked it out of the park in their presentation. Again, we looked at customer service, transparency, their strategy, staff engagement. I told all the firms what we were going to score them on. I was very transparent with what we were expecting. They were really the only ones, I felt like, that catered their presentation to what we were asking.
Their wellness program that they recommend going into, I think, of doing like the pre- Yes. That was the only, the teacher, that takes a learning curve for you to kind of get on board, and that was the only thing, but in terms of customer service switching, that was one thing of being on, yeah, changing from board policy stuff, that I was like, oh, I just hope this goes easy for administrators, and there was no concerns.
If anything, they were pleasantly surprised about the ins and outs of school insurance and what we, they learned a lot.
Yeah.
It was a very good learning process for the staff, which is why I think I want to increase that group.
Yeah.
Include more, because the word of mouth that they're going to be able to spread. And one thing I think these guys will pride themselves on is the education of staff on how to use the program to the best of their abilities.
Yeah.
So, again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vanegriff and Mr. West.
I did wear purple tonight, so I was going to point that out.
Noticed.
Smart.
And this is a dry subject, but it is something we do take pride in trying to educate, for, you know, it's important to us because it's become so expensive. Healthcare is, it's a huge part of the staff's compensation, and, you know, it's something that shouldn't be taken lightly. And we take, you know, we're very honored to be here tonight and that we were selected unanimously, that's important to us because we really do care about the school district and about our community. So, thank you, and I will let Reese do the rest.
Let me babble?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So, yeah, first off, thank you, Dr. McMainz, for having us, we're excited to be here. And I'm glad we got here early and got to listen to Ms. Cop's spiel on MSEP 6, I believe it is, sort of elevating the bar, maybe having the same results but holding yourself to a higher standard. I think that resonates with what we hope to do. It's not that you've done anything poorly or incorrectly in the past, we just have a different way of thinking about how this whole procurement process should go down. And Dr. Miller, I have to thank you for referring me over to Zach to get this whole process started. So, 10 minutes or less, we'll kind of walk through what we talked to the insurance committee about, but I want to leave the floor open for questions, concerns, feel free to stop and hit the pause button and ask us in the middle. I'll kind of click through some slides here, and then we'll wrap it up here in a few minutes. So, a little bit about USI. Soft agenda, we'll tell you about who we are, how we came to be in the insurance market, specifically with public school districts. And then I want to talk about the three things that we were graded on in the RFP process, being staff engagement, and then our internal resources to support you as an employer, and then also each of your employees individually, and their families at home. And then, last but not least, we'll have a brief discussion on the compensation and why we philosophically believe that what we've presented is more aligned with what you guys hope to accomplish as a district, and that transparency is at the epicenter of that entire conversation. So, this first page, just a quick, high-level overview, everywhere you see a dot is going to be a USI office. I always candidly joke that USI may be one of the largest consulting firms you've never heard of. Understand, Serve, and Innovate, that's what we believe on, it's our core philosophy. One of the differentiators about how we come to the market, a very objective approach, as opposed to a subjective, or, you know, put a blindfold on and take what you can get approach, is our one advantage. It's an acronym for our Omni Proprietary Analytics System, our network of insurance company equivalent experts, and then lastly, the enterprise or the practice in which we do business. The data analytics, as you mentioned, you're working with some other companies that are about data analytics when it comes to surveying. Being able to look at information and make educated decisions, which is a derivative of our 3D, which is data-driven decisions. We house this program internally. It was built internally to be able to distribute information from offices here in Kansas City to St. Louis, to New York, and Florida, and California. Insurance companies being bought up all over the place, but the intellectual capital that each of those places in different regions have, we wanted to access that at the producer level. So, USI firmly believes in linear leadership and be able to find solutions that are working in other schools, in other regions, and be able to present those to folks like yourself and make a decision with administration, considering the goals of the district and the budget, et cetera. So, our Omni is definitely a big differentiator that you guys have access to. This next page is just our network of insurance experts. I actually put this in the presentation twice, in front of the insurance committee, and you could essentially put Blue Cross of Kansas City or any insurance company name that you can think of on these folks' business cards, and they would be the equivalent of an insurance company with respect, right? Underwriters, pharmacy consultants, population health consultants. The beauty in USI is that we distribute and give you access to these folks all year round at no additional cost. So, it's not that our competitors don't have similar or the same types of resources, but the access and the frequency that you can utilize those resources, either A, cost you money as a client, or B, in some cases, cost me as a producer money. So, you can see how there's maybe a misalignment of interest, where if I had to go out and buy these people for you on your behalf, it wouldn't necessarily make sense. I might do less and less each year to keep your business and just hit that auto-renew button, or what we call sleeping at the wheel when it comes to this stuff. So, the network is extremely important, they're engaged on your behalf proactively already, and we're gearing up for the renewal conversation to complement the budget timeline. And then, last but not least, quickly, our enterprise, this is a practice, right? Carney and the public school district's budget and goals are at the center of every conversation. The network wraps around that conversation in conjunction with what you guys expect and what you need to see, and hopefully, that's how we deliver the results. So, that's the differentiator about USI. One of the things that Ms. Switzer talked about in our conversation is getting ahead of claims. It's a condition that consumers, and it's not, nobody's fault, it's just been this way, that you get what you get, right? That nobody can control claims, and that's true to a certain degree for the catastrophic things that you can't foresee, but what we know to be true is that if you're looking in the right places, you can find results that can help you actually control your costs over a long period of time. And a large part of that resides in the primary care engagement. I'm proud to say that USI hasn't issued an increase in its insurance to employees in over eight years, and this is the exact same strategy that we're going to be recommended to the school and the district. Just some quick facts and figures, the average American, 30% of us have a relationship with a primary care doctor. After a few years in working with USI and our core health strategy, that looks more like 80%. So, you can imagine, there's a longstanding joke, air quote, that people or districts or groups actually get sicker when they hire USI, and it's not that you're getting sicker, it's that you're finding out, you know, illnesses before they become catastrophic claims, which is when they get expensive and the survival rate decreases. And you can see some of this stuff here. So, when we get in front of a primary care doctor, your urgent care utilization goes down, your emergency utilization goes down, but most importantly, your primary care doctor is much cheaper to receive care than from an ER or an emergency room. Also, you know, when it comes to detailed case management, your primary care doctor serves as a coach. That's a person who's going to ask how you're feeling, they're talking to you about, you know, ways to improve your health, improve your habits, and it serves as that touchpoint annually, biannually, to get sound advice and help make better consumer decisions, which we hope transcends to spouses and dependents, and it's sort of a cultural change that you see over time, with the right incentives and motivation.
Age-appropriate screenings, you know, as we get the gray hair, you know, is a big piece of primary care engagement. The biggest cost driver in healthcare today is high-cost payments. We call them ticking time bombs. And so, you know, discussing- And so, you know, discussing data earlier, one of the things that we do is we mine data. And, you know, you would think that if we looked at your population and we saw three people that were diabetic, oh, hooray, that's great. Well, actually, it's not. It's not that the other 35 aren't there, it's that they're going untreated or they're not staying appropriate to the medications they need. And so, what happens over time is those individuals get sicker, and all of a sudden, the district has a $250,000 claim instead of a $25,000 claim. And so, a lot of what Reese is talking about is just really how we engage staff early on to build that relationship and get the coaching they need, right? Right where it's at the least cost of entry, if that makes sense. So, that is really a core part of how we control claims, because, you know, you can finance insurance a certain way, and you can communicate it a certain way, but a lot of times, if you're not improving your overall claims profile, that's where 80% of your cost lies. And so, that's a big piece of why we believe in this strategy and how it changes over time.
Just a quick question. Being in healthcare, so you have a non-compliant staff member, as you mentioned, probably somebody who's diabetic, not doing what they're supposed to, taking their insulin regimen or glucophiles. So, you guys have somebody to coach them, is that what you're saying? To get them back on track where they're supposed to be and everything like that?
So, yeah. You're 100% right. And so, it's a progression, right? So, the first step is literally just simply incentivizing your staff, in a way, usually by premium differences, but there are other ways. Sometimes it's an incentive-type program, but to get a primary care physician. If we polled your staff, if we did, you know, a survey, 60, 65%, maybe even 70%, don't have a primary care doctor. And so, right then and there, we have a challenge with any time there's something unexpected, they're going to the urgent care or the emergency room for their entry, right? Now, that's just entry into the system, let alone what takes place after that. So, Reese had mentioned a minute ago, you know, if we go to and we get a primary care physician, that entry points $150 instead of $1,500. It's not that they won't even need the same things, but it's just where they enter the system. And then, to your point, as time builds, so that's year one, right? And then age and gender-appropriate screenings. And then gradually, a point system, if you will, to let them, you know, engage in different services or reach out to different services. Some of those services can be proactive, some of them can be reactive, and it's really part of how we engage, you know, the staff and the committee and how they, you know, want to build this program around what we originally just started at, if that makes sense. So, yes, it can be that, it just depends on the scenario.
But I think to maybe expand on your question, we don't have someone that's going to be calling your employees, saying, hey, go to the doctor. You know, we can incentivize them. As an employer, you don't ever want to force your hand on somebody. And as employees and as consumers, I think we can all understand that. When you have multiple options, the option to go to the doctor and pay less or to go to the doctor and receive points for a chance to win rewards, you're now taking yourself off of that hot seat. You will have undoubtedly employees who will never go to the doctor. They're out there, and they should have to subsidize more so because they are more likely to cost the district a lot of money.
And it's across the board. I mean, just because I did call analysts and stuff, and today I just spoke cardiologist. Been one for 40 years. I go, when's the last time you've been to a primary? He goes, three years. He hasn't established, hasn't did what he's supposed to or anything like that.
Don't ask doctors.
But he's been a cardiologist for 40 years. And so, so it's across the board, and no matter what, yeah, that's right, yeah.
But you really do get to achieve sort of a cultural behavior, and this is like unanimous. I mean, in a previous lifetime, I worked with about 100 school districts in consortiums, and it's rate increase after rate increase. And superintendents and administrators are coming and saying, why? Well, why? Well, you're not doing anything for 11 months, and then you hit that auto-renew button. What's your no-shop number, where everything stays the same and nobody does any work? But if you want to create a long-term solution, it's going to take a little bit of effort from district and also from employee. But when you get both people engaged in the right ways, the results can be extremely positive.
What's the average cost reduction in claims annually for those that have been with you for a while that are using the preventative care?
That's a great question. So, in the first year, you actually may see a small uptick because you're going to catch those people that are untreated and undiagnosed.
We're saying a five-year.
Over time, you're going to see that trend line decrease. I can't put a number or a percent. You can?
It's about 1.5% the first, well, actually, the second year.
Okay.
And that does taper off, as we mentioned, the better you do, the harder it is to improve.
Make the change.
But usually, year two, three, four, we're going to see about 1.5%, sometimes 2%, depending on the scenario. And then, same thing with spouses. If spouses are on the plan and we choose to engage them and that type of thing, we could typically see the same sort of results.
Something from the committee that they, we heard multiple times was that staff didn't really know what they had, what their options were. And so, for years, it was like, well, I didn't realize I could go to the doctor like that. And so, in their presentation with their tools, it was the engagement for the staff to learn what's at their fingertips is what helps them get going, so.
It was really fun to kind of explain that for the first time to some of them, that you realize you can go to the primary care doctor once a year for a wellness exam, right? And we actually want you to do that. And there were a few of them that were like, we can? Like, that's paid for? And I'm like, yeah, it's paid for, we want you to.
Do you guys have any other questions on the primary care engagement? What's really exciting is we know that this stuff works, and we believe we're the firm to help communicate that and educate them. And that's the most fun part, is you get to see the results unfold, and, you know, from a budgeting perspective, your bottom line is very, very satisfied. This next page, I always tell people, the saving money part is great, but that's really just a byproduct of actually impacting the people that work here. So, this dry, sort of lethargic topic of insurance and budgeting, it has to be spoken about, but you have people working here that have families. You know, my family goes to school here, some of them anyway. You're actually going to help them take better care of themselves. And that's going to be behavior that their kids soon pick up on, that maybe they talk about over the holidays. So, you actually impact the people's lives. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that the committee really resonated with that because, yes, saving money is great, but saving people is a whole heck of a lot better. It sounds cheesy, but it is true. And you can note, you know, even in our own internal office, because we have an incentivized physician engagement, we have an employee locally who is diagnosed with a specific, you know, disease, and they would not have been aware of that had they not gone in. So, now caught earlier, lower cost of treatment, and much higher likelihood of survival rate. So, it's really a change.
You talk a lot about relationships with your primary care physician. Do you penalize, or is it harder for people to go see a specialist if necessary?
So, everything starts at the primary care level, and then if a specialist becomes involved, that's part of the conversation with your primary care doctor. I don't know if any of you have tried to get into a primary care doctor, but that can be a challenge. So, just getting that first step out of the way. And then if a specialist is warranted, then it's up to the employee and then our customer service team to help them find the right specialist that's going to provide them the best treatment for whatever's going on. Does that answer your question? Kind of? Really?
Yes, it does.
Well, I think for me, it's just trying to find people to be proactive versus reactive. I mean, I think, I see so many patients that are like, hey, I don't have a primary, but I can go to the urgent care, I can go to the ER, I can go wherever like that, and they'll take care of me, and I can get bit out the fire, and then I'll go on for another two years or whatever like that. And so, that's the hard part, yeah.
Are you familiar with what Smithville's doing with the in-house nurse practitioner for employees?
Yeah, sort of like a mock onsite clinic. No, to be completely candid, I'm not intimately familiar with it, but that's something that, you know, we could talk about if you guys are interested. Employers are doing it. Again, doing a lot of the data and perhaps benchmarking, which I haven't had the chance to speak with our contacts here. But we do a large benchmarking study in March and April that's released in May, and it's a great way to sort of see how you stack up to not only your neighboring districts, but also districts in the region, and see what kind of plans they're offering. What, I mean, benchmarking goes so deep, right? To deductibles, coinsurance, and out-of-pocket. But we do it at a much deeper level because, again, we're mining that information internally. So, we talk about actuarial value, you know, the post-effects of something like COVID, return to work. And it produces this really entertaining 40-page report where it tells you, you're great. I mean, A, B, C, what can you do better? What are you doing great at, and where do you need to maintain? So, that's something that we would recommend the district do as part of that benchmarking survey. It doesn't cost anything, and I'll actually be able to punch it in on your behalf because I have all the plan information, so it'd be great. If you have any contacts at Smithville, we'd love to get their information in there, too.
Say, speaking of other districts around Kansas City, I mean, you probably saw our peer group. I mean, are you working with any other school districts close to us?
I made a lot of phone calls. Sometimes they don't always pick up, but in a former life I mentioned, we insure a lot of schools. Our St. Louis office has a heavy volume of business in the public sector. I personally have experience in it. It's just going to take us some time to gain more momentum up here in the Kansas City area, and there are proactive conversations going on with, you know, 15 to 20 districts in this area.
So, we're the first one to grab on?
Yeah, because, so I wanted to take that. So, USI purchased, and you may be familiar, I think a lot of people see the blue heart when they drive down 435, but Creative Planning, they had an employee benefit division. This was the last major metro area we didn't have an office in back in 2020. And so, we purchased their employee benefit division, and then they hired. I came from our USI office in St. Louis, don't hold that against me. My dad grew up in Kansas City. But I came over here to take this practice over at the end of 2021 as a practice leader. So, we have about 250 school districts within.
The region.
The region, yeah. I guess you would say the states that touch. And we just acquired the largest consortium in the state of Illinois. But, yeah, no, this is really new for us here. We're excited to show you guys everything we can do here locally.
Okay, so then my next question, and I can't find it, and I'm looking through this agreement, but my question is, is we're talking flat fee versus commission. So, obviously, we're new, you're excited about getting some business. Is there in the contract, or that I can't find, that you guys can go up a percentage yourselves? Or is that a locked-in for?
One of the biggest frustrations that I have in general in our industry, I promise not to get on a soapbox here. One of the biggest frustrations I have in our industry is that there is a lack of transparency. And it starts not just at the insurance provider, but the pharmacies, and even some of our own as far as consulting firms. And so, one of the things we truly believe in and are changing, we charge a flat fee. There are no bonuses paid on the back end, there are no additional costs. You pay exactly what you pay. It is 100%, that is it. And that is very different than our industry. A lot of times, it's a percentage of commission. So, when they do bad, they actually get a raise. Your premiums go up 15%. Hey, they just got a 15% raise. To me, that's not okay.
But you guys can get a contingent on the back end.
So, actually, part of the reason I was late on getting you that fee agreement is because we negotiated with your incumbent as we would any future opportunities to get rid of that. When we set a ceiling, and you'll notice, we've looked at $120,000 flat fee, that's the ceiling, not a dollar more. I mean, we could give you a receipt. Now, there's some instances where commissions that can't be removed, that maybe wouldn't affect the rate, because in a perfect world, we remove all the commissions on the ancillary products, which most of your employees pay for out of their own pocket. And if it doesn't reduce the price of the product, then it doesn't make sense. So, we just offset the fee. But the ceiling is what the ceiling is. So, you may have had other people say, we're going to charge you 60,000 or 70,000, but maybe they're getting 70,000 or 80,000 in a bonus. And then they're taking commissions on things like dental and vision and life insurance. And when you're done doing the rigmarole of adding all of that up, it's still very difficult to come up with a true round number. And this is the way I hope to run my business today and for a long, long time in the future, is just to set a flat rate. And we're very excited to be able to talk about that to other districts, and they're listening. I mean, they're excited. So, it's a more fair, I mean, you get receipts when you buy anything. You should be able to do the same from your insurance consultant.
That is a big deal. I mean, there's a big difference. Contingency bonuses are kind of like the hidden little secret. A lot of times, they're paid out of the marketing fund, so they don't actually, aren't considered, you know, additional fees or additional compensation, so they don't get reported to the district. And so, the way our contract reads, you know, if it's at all possible, we are, you know, pulling out all contingencies, all commissions. If, to Reese's point, there are times where a contingency can't be pulled out. Literally, it's filed with the state of Missouri as an insurance product, and a commission's built in, and there's nothing we can do about it if we keep that product. Then we will report that and reduce your fee as an organization by whatever that amount is.
This structure was dramatically different than what I could see, what we currently had. Pretty black and white to where I don't, I mean, I can go into detail of what we had, but it was pretty hard to itemize out.
Oh, they're great.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for any holes to make sure that we, you know, no pitfalls, no speed bumps.
It sounds too good to be true, doesn't it?
Right.
A little bit.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Just a personal experience, the guy I buy my car from, he shows me the invoice that he paid for the car, and he charges me 500 bucks. That feels pretty good when I buy that car, right?
Yeah.
This is exactly the same kind of business model that they're funding. And, you know, the number, I need to put a point of clarification here on the fee structure that I put in the board packet. The percentage of premium is accurate, the 155. The $10 bonus is not. I don't know what bonus that they're getting because they won't tell me because they don't have to. That's what I know for a fact that we paid them last year. I don't know what else they received from us. We're going to put some math, do some math on the last 10 years, and it's probably going to break our hearts a little bit, what we've maybe spent in admin fees to previous brokers. So, just been super happy with the transparency. That was one of the main things, is a completely different fee structure from the other firms we interviewed.
True.
The difference between being a broker and a consultant. We don't consider ourselves a broker. And not that that's a bad word, but it's just not what we do. We consider ourselves, we want our goals to be fully aligned with yours. Our fee is not inexpensive. I mean, if you look, that's a good chunk of money you guys will be paying us. But it's transparent, and you'll know exactly what it is, and you won't have to question it. And I think that's important.
And to answer a question initially, Mr. Kern, the 3% annually or whatever incremental, you know, that we or other consultants may ask for, we were late getting the agreement to you because we had to go to our leadership and actually pull that stuff out. So, unless we come back and we ask you for a raise, which we would only do if there was profound success, there's not going to be any foreseeable changes in what that consulting fee looks like. And we think that that's fair.
So, we brought on DLR 20 years ago, which is our architectural firm. We were the first one in Kansas City to bring DLR on. So, with USI, this is right up Carney's alley. Just for a little history lesson for you.
And then, real quick, some of the exciting stuff. You guys actually currently have access to a program called Smart Shopper through Blue Cross. We'll do some educational campaigns on this, but think of it as an Amazon, but for healthcare services. You can go online and see what providers are charging what, and it's a great way to be an educated consumer. There's some other quality control metrics that are being factored into that, which is important, but we'll save that for a later discussion just for the sake of time. Some other additional resources to support, I know Dawn in the plan administration and HR, but also to our Benefit Resource Center, where we have W-2 USI employees that have access to the benefit program at Carney. They're able to speak with individual employees to explain things like an EOB, a prior authorization, a can I do this, where should I go, et cetera, to sort of alleviate some of that burdensome and cumbersome work that your internal HR department may have. Everybody that we implement the BRC with, they're floored by. They get the same person on the same issue, is very easy to understand, and it's sort of like having your own concierge when it comes to healthcare questions. So, we're excited about the BRC. A big part behind the scenes on that is the reporting. So, we can actually tell based on what employees are making calls. If it's one plan and they're constantly asking questions or having concerns about this, we can then reconvene with the district and kind of triage that and figure out, okay, what do we need to change in order to maybe see less questions or less traffic about this? And so, being able to track the information behind the scenes is very important. Everybody has a smartphone nowadays. We're very excited about the mobile app for teachers. They're going to be able to have a handheld in their pocket. Spouses, dependents can have it if they're away at school, but you have access to your ID cards, so there's no more shuffling through wallets and purses. When you do go to the doctor's office, you just pull out your phone, and it's right there. And then very high-level, generic benefits questions, but most importantly, a universal bridge to get them to the right people to answer those detailed, specific questions. And the versatility and user experience of an app just makes sense. What's nice about this is it's not bound or contingent on any carrier other than us. You know, as long as you guys are working with us, your employees will have access to this app, and we can update that post-out messaging for communication. You know, you want to run a water campaign in July or talk about primary care engagement, we can send that stuff out through the app. There's a demo code that I can send out if you guys want to check it out, too. Another thing that we believe will help support the district is just a stewardship process. Being cognizant of our timelines and deadlines with respect to compliance, budget goals, renewal meetings and just engagement conversations throughout the year. I kind of made a mention of a set it and forget it strategy. That's not our philosophy. We view ourselves as an extension of your organization and we want to make sure that we're holding our expectations that you guys have for us. So quarterly conversations at first, if more frequent or required, we can make that a thing. But we want to make sure that we're up to your standards because the bar is being raised across the board, it sounds like here at Carney. And we want to make sure that we equate with that. This, this piece right here, I know it's hard to see, but having a consultant that's able to pivot as time goes on is very important. I'll attribute the capabilities of USI to that network of insurance experts. So if in a year from now, we've changed things around and a fully insured plan, which is where you, you know, send your money to the company and they pay the claims. Doesn't necessarily make sense. Maybe we want to talk about a partially self-insured plan or a level funded plan. Having someone like USI and the resources to be able to definitively come in and provide statistics and data that say, we believe that this is a success. A success. And we can show you that over the last three years using historical data to project and trend that out into the future. So we're positioned to be able to help you guys get to where you want to go. It's going to be an exciting kind of little journey because we'll see you guys get healthier, trend and claims will go down. And then your opportunities expand exponentially when it comes to marketing and you can get very, very creative. We had the compensation conversation. If you guys have any questions, we're an open book. I mean, transparency is, is one of our core values, especially mine personally. The smoke and mirrors games do not go on. So anything, nothing is off limits.
I think with Blue Cross, we've had access to something called KC Blue. We can go online and, I mean, we still have that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you ever tried to call that number?
Okay. Have I done it?
I mean, have you ever tried to call the number? That, that was a big thing that when the committee talked about having access to someone other than maybe Dawn or her. That to call Blue Cross off the app was hard.
It's not for me, but I'm retired. A teacher, though, who has 20 minutes for lunch, doesn't have a lot of time to do any of this.
And their concierge service, if I understand right, starts at like 8:00 AM in California and goes till 8:00 PM out in Maine. So the 24 hour service is, it fits the teacher lifestyle of having before school hours and after school hours to reach someone to help get information.
And, and that's not the only route. You guys have been assigned, Cara Vincent, can't say enough great things about her. She's one of the most sophisticated and eloquent people when it comes to managing an account like this. I was floored by the initial conversations with getting broker of record letters in place and starting this whole renewal process. She's an email or a phone call away. She sits right across from me in our office and I can hear the magic as it happens. She's very quick and knowledgeable and she really does provide that, you know, local boutique approach where you feel taken care of and that's very important. We want everybody to feel that way. So we've done quite a bit of gabbing. So if you guys have questions, Q and A, you can take a picture, my email, Brad's email is up there. Feel free to reach out to us. But we are actively having conversations with, you know, Blue Cross of Kansas on your behalf. We'll be presenting multiple options in different directions that you guys have. And hopefully we'll be able to work with Dr. McMains and the rest of the school district to determine what you guys hope to accomplish.
Reese, where is your office?
It is off of 435 in Knoll in Overland Park. So it's not too far. It's about 40ish five, 45 minutes from here.
You see the big blue heart? We're still in the Creative Planning campus, if you're familiar with that area down there. We are looking to move possibly to the side of the.
You're supposed to say Carney.
Well said, Reese.
Let me know if you need a house. Okay.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you very much for your presentation and answering all of our questions. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All in favor of our insurance consultant contract?
Do you guys like a hard copy of what we went through?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just leave them here while I'll pass them out afterwards. We'll pass them out after.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Okay, next. Thank you. Thank you. Approval of agreement with Frontline? Wait, there's another one. Oh, I skipped. Transportation, sorry. Transportation Services.
Move to approve agreement with Durham School Services as presented.
Second.
So we put out an RFP for Transportation Services. We received four proposals back on February 22nd. We put together a committee that reviewed those four proposals and brought in two companies, Durham being one of them. During that interview process, we had the committee requested that Durham add two additional staff members to their front office. And that was agreed upon. The committee then take a look at strongly at the company's ability to provide qualified drivers and their bus fleet. And how they performed, especially during the last few years of pandemic with essentially uninterrupted service and what they provided. And we, we tied that together with Durham having the low bid along with the least expensive annual percentage increase on their proposal. And that is essentially our recommendation.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Approval of agreement with Frontline?
Approve Master Services Agreement with Frontline as presented.
Second.
I think I've, I've brought this up several times before, but right now our HR and business operations departments in the Carney School District primarily operate with paper. A lot of our HR workflow processes are done with paper. We've done a really good job of keeping track of those processes and we haven't skipped a beat. But however, as the, as our district grows, we need to automate some of those, some of those workflow processes to make sure that we are becoming as efficient and as effective as we can as an HR or a department. We've been running very lean, like I said, you know, mostly with paper. What I would like to do is, what I'm recommending for Frontline is that a lot of our processes like resignations, hires, interviews. That is all ran through what is called Frontline Central. All the documents, all the documentation that are, is collected for employees is in one place. Right now, we have Laserfish, we have Talent Ed, we have individual folders in principals' offices. We have folders all over the district where some of these items are kept. And we're trying to consolidate this so that we don't lose important documentation, but also that we have this documentation at the employees' fingertips. So they're able to have access to that information as well. We'll have access to, all the administrators will have access with a dashboard to their positions in their building. One thing right now, if you would ask me how many, how many employees we have in the district, I will tell you that we have 553. However, that changes from year to year and we want to be able to see at a touch of a button where all our employees are, what buildings there are, how long they've been here, what they're making. And right now we have to use our financial system, which is a great financial system. However, it's not conducive to most of our operations in the district. Now, there is a cost that would come with this and I do expect to expand, I would hope to expect or to expand this program even further in the future. But this will be a three-year agreement. There is a little bit of an increase of cost. There is a one-time service fee that they'll, that they'll charge us at the beginning. But all in, it's going to be when we remove our Time Clock Plus, which that'll be replaced with a different product. Our Power School Recruiting Hire, which we're currently using, will be replaced with another, with another frontline product. And then also the, what are, oh, Laserfish, excuse me, Laserfish. Where we're storing all of our documents with PDFs, we're scanning them manually and uploading them into a database. That'll also be replaced. All in, we're going to be about $10,000 more a year spent. And we're going to be much more mobile, much more flexible, much more really confidential. You know, we're not going to have these documents floating around, all these confidential documents floating around the district and everyone will have access to them from a central point. So really, districts, other districts I've been in, we might be a little bit behind the times in as far as our, our workflow processes and the technologies we're using. I think this would be a smart move for us to move this direction and get, get our district on the right track when it comes to our, our HR processes and workflows.
After, oh, sorry.
Sorry. I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
Just because we had a similar HR software in a previous place. I was administrator. We did a similar contract, but then what we didn't look at in the beginning was an end to that contract and a transition and interface. And with all our employees and that sort of thing, is there something on the tail end of this? I'm sure you probably looked at it that, hey, if we want to move on or something like that, we can interface, have all our data and move on to another company, you know, whatever.
Mr. Holloway, that's a great question. We own our data, we own our documents. So right now, we have some Talent Ed Power School products, United Talents thing in the company. We're going to be able to move all of those and, and transfer, upload those to, to frontline product. We could do vice versa if we wanted to go back to a different product. So we have access to all that. Is that the question you're asking?
I just want to make sure if there was an exit somewhere three years down the road that we have all that data.
Another thing I might add too is that we're going to run parallel with some of our systems for about a month so that we don't lose anything. With our Time Clock Plus especially, we're going to, we're going to run some parallel systems to make sure there's no glitches. We'll keep our existing systems that we have and we'll run parallel for a little bit before we completely transfer over to frontline if approved.
Okay.
Brian?
Does anybody currently working in the district have experience with this program previously?
We're currently using some of those programs. We currently use a suite like Forecast 5 is a frontline product. Our, my learning plan is a frontline product. Our sub, our ASOP is currently our frontline product. So we already are using a lot of those. We're not using Frontline Central, but we don't have a current product that would actually be comparable to Frontline Central.
You're happy with those other subset of programs that we're using?
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Brian, we do have an employee that's familiar with that in another school district, yeah.
It's HR related programs that I watch many of the companies I've worked for, that they look great, we implement, and then they're a disaster. And then three years later, we're back at the table. So it's just great if there's somebody that's got that track record to say yes.
Liam Brad there.
She worked with them, worked with at North Kansas City, if I'm not mistaken, yes. And we've also checked references with other districts who are currently using this product in this area and they're very happy with the product as well. We have a lot of access to professional development and, and support, which we didn't with our other, other solutions that we've had currently. Do you guys have any questions for me? Any others? Excuse me, Ms. Swarman, you had one.
No, I don't have a question. I just can't believe we haven't had something like this before. After looking through this and then talking with you, some of the things that I thought were covered are not. And the implementation of workflow is key. So I'm really, really happy to see you doing this.
Well, Ms. Elsie can attest is when we make it, or if someone resigns, we have to have a meeting where we're all talking about. Or someone has to go down the hallway and talk to technology. Someone has to go to business operations. And now this product will send emails or alerts via that product. Hey, you have a task you need to complete. There needs to be in a, you need to turn off technology. You need to remove their work record. There's all different types of things that, it's not just.
Helps us be compliant.
Yeah, it's right, exactly. It's not just a board meeting where we approve the resignation. There are several steps that again, I say we're handling with paper. It's really just maybe a holler down the hallway. And that's being, that's actually accurate. So it's, you know, it's, it's easy, Ms. Bergman. She's the queen of holler down the hallway. So we, I think this will, this is going to allow us to even work more efficiently as far as, we don't, we need more time to do the things that we do best. And that's work with our people, right? A lot of this, it takes time. We want to be able to interact with our, with our staff members. And this is going to give us some more time and able to do that, to focus on the important things. Any other questions for me?
I'm going to remember that phrase, holler down the hallway. I like it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Very good. Forgiveness of snow days.
Move to, oh, move to approve forgiveness of February 9th and February 15th, 2023 for KSD staff as presented.
Second.
Okay. Before you, you have a request to seek forgiveness for February 9th and February 15th snow days. Again, February 9th was an inclement weather day where we did have some staff members working, including custodial grounds and maintenance where we would be seeking an additional day of leave for those employees. And again, on the 15th, that was the Chiefs Parade Day. Moving forward, we feel like we've got a really good plan, which we executed on the last inclement weather day on the February 16th. When we called the day, it was a flex workday. So teachers stayed at home, did planning and collaboration. So I think that's, that's our game plan moving forward. And again, we're just seeking forgiveness for these two days.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of bill from Coal Printing?
Move to approve bill from Coal Printing as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? All opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next. Approval of payment to Darlene Bailey?
Move to approve payment to Darlene Bailey as presented.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Abstain? Oh, sorry. Can you give me just one second? It takes me just a second. Yes. It's not moving as fast as you are. Sorry. No, you're fine. Okay, carry on. All right. Board member comments?
I have a couple.
Oh, I beat you.
The transportation, I wanted to say thank you to Tisa. I know she's sitting here. So we talk a lot about what goes on in the buildings, but you and your staff get those kids to the buildings and you guys do an incredible job. Your drivers, you put in a lot of work. So thank you for all of that. So I wanted to make sure and tell you that. Also, Darlene was, received the master board certification, board member certification. So lots goes on with that. 12 additional training credits completed, annual refresher training requirement through MSBA. Read two books related to school board services, attended at least two MSB regional or statewide events. And wrote a brief essay relating their study to their board service. So a lot more. Thank you. Very much. Okay, I'm done.
What's that?
Oh, I can too. Yeah, I wasn't going to hang on to that.
Hey, Ray, you want to picture that? Let's go ahead and do that now. Emily, you going to be in that picture with her?
Got to have the whole board?
We can, we absolutely could.
Why don't you get in front of the kid?
Oh.
Wouldn't that look nice? Okay. Oh, we're going to. Yeah, I like everybody being in it.
Yeah. She's done that third recognition.
That's okay.
The only thing I'll say about board member comment, because I do want to make a comment, is that I love the fact that we're entering the 21st century on technology and making the job of our teachers easier as far as being focused on kids. And, and that's encouraging as a board member to see us making some of those good decisions. And I also would say Dogwood Elementary, you know, knocked it out of the park.
Yes, they did a great job. I would only add that I appreciate all of you all and I, yes, I enjoy doing the certification and it was interesting. I've learned a lot, but I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you and the staff. And the staff especially, you guys have done a lot of work in the last five or six months to get a lot of information to us. And we are sometimes a little overwhelmed with all that information, but we asked for it. We asked for information, transparency, communication, and that's one of our board goals for this year. And I really think that we've all worked hard at that and I appreciate everybody's involvement in that because I've never heard anyone say that they have been over communicated with. So there's always room for improvement and I think we have made a lot of great strides this year. So thank you all for that because we are, we're making a lot of things happen, as John said, and getting us. and getting us where we need to be and it's because of a lot of hard work behind the scenes and we really do appreciate that.
Now, I'm not a board member. May I make a comment?
You may.
Okay. It, it is Board Member Recognition Month and, uh, each of you spend, um, an incredible amount of time making sure, uh, the kids of Carney School District are taken care of. So thank you for your volunteer, thank you for your service. We greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, let's see.
Thanks, I feel appreciated.
I hope you do.
I do.
Important dates. End of the quarter is Friday, St. Patrick's Day. Much needed, uh, spring break for the next week after that, right, Bree?
I just got back.
Oh. Okay. Would you like your kids to go to school?
I would.
You would? Okay. We'll put something together just for you, too.
It's like Christmas break, geez.
March 29th is our Board Candidate Forum, uh, which will be at the high school at 7 o'clock, is that right?
Six.
6 o'clock, okay.
Somebody knows.
Okay, 6 o'clock for that and, uh, I know that there's been a lot of positive conversation about that in the community. People are looking forward to it, so, uh, those of you candidates that are here, thank you for participating in that. April 4th, uh, so before we have our next meeting, we'll have board elections. April 12th is our next board meeting, which is a week earlier than usual because of the election. And then on April 18th, we will have our next quarterly board work session. Miscellaneous?
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in April, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Meredith Cole?